Good morning. Today is Wednesday, January the 6th, 2021. Goodbye, 2020. It is nine o'clock. We are at a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue, better known as the Grimes County Annex Building. Calling the meeting to order Agenda Item Number One, I'd ask that you please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge to the U.S. and to the Texas flag. Shall we pray? Father, I thank you for this day and the blessings of this life. Father, we ask that you continue to watch over our nation, our state, our county, and each and every one of our citizens. Father, give us peace and give us comfort and give us understanding. We know that there is tension within our community that carries over into our nation or rather our nation that carries into our community. And Father, we just ask for peace throughout, that we have understanding with the democracy that has occurred within our nation. Father, we would ask that you be with those that have been suffering through this COVID epidemic, that, Father, you help them regain their health. For those that have lost loved ones, please give them comfort and peace and let them have joy in the memories of those that they love. Father, we ask that you give each and every Commissioner and the County Judge and all elected officials in this county the wisdom and the guidance to make proper decisions that serve the citizens of this county. We thank you for the opportunity to serve with sincerity. Precious Saviors, name Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you very much. Would you be seated, please? We're going to ask for public comments. Madam County Clerk, do you have any other than the two that I have?
No, sir.
Two announcements that I'd like to make. One, this is on behalf of Crime Stoppers. They're not able to have a representative here this morning. But please note that the Grimes County Crime Stoppers will hold their annual Law Enforcement Awards Dinner on Saturday, January the 16th, and will announce Officer of the Year and Matorious Service Award winners for 2020. The event will be held at the Anderson Knights of Columbus Hall in Anderson, and the doors will open at 6:00 P.M. The Mallett Brothers BBQ Catered Meal is free for law enforcement staff and their families and by donations for other guests. Mallett Brothers will be boxing each meal separately. This year's event features live music performed by The Hard Luck Band and speakers from Grimes County True Blue Foundation. And due to the COVID restrictions, seating capacity is limited. So if you have a desire to go, you should contact Crime Stoppers and one of your individual contact people would be Connie Clements. Second public comment that I'd like to make, I received an update from Jim Allison's group, who provides legal advice over at Texas Association of Counties. And I'm just going to read the statement. Says the Texas Department, and if you are watching out in the Internet world, if you don't have a paper and pencil, you might want to collect that real quick as I read through this because I'm going to give you a website at the completion of this announcement. Says the Texas Department of State Health Services provided a coronavirus update by conference call today. TDSHS expects the number of Texas cases, hospitalizations, and deaths to continue to increase during the coming weeks. Vaccine supplies are less than projected and distribution has been problematic. As supplies become available to additional citizens, each person will need to contact an approved vaccine provider to determine availability and schedule an injection. The TDSHS website has a list of vaccine provider locations at, and you might want to write this down, One more time quickly. So you can go to that website to find out where the providers may be and who's scheduling those injection sites. And we will provide additional information as it becomes available. You can check the Grimes County website and we'll continue to give updates on that website as they do indeed occur. Commissioner Dobianski?
I have a public announcement I need to make. I want to thank everybody that donated to our Christmas gifts for the kids in the county. We did find two families in Richardson, one in Bedeys, that I delivered gifts and a meal to, compliments of the food pantry here in Anderson. They put together a Christmas meal for those people. We bought gifts for them and we also got clothing for five kids, gifts and clothing for five kids from that. Appreciate your donations. And they were very appreciative to get that.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any other public comments?
Just want to remind everybody we still have testing sites available here in Navasota this week, and they will move to Todd Mission next week. And they will move around the county.
We're going to continue the four locations within Grimes County. Todd Mission, Navasota, Bedeys, and Anderson.
It's one a week, though.
Correct. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move to consent agenda items number three through five. Consider and take action to approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. Agenda item four. Consider and take action to approve payroll. Agenda item five. Consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers as listed. If there are no questions or concerns, is there a motion?
I'm going to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, four, and five by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? In hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. We will go to Agenda Item Number Six. Grimes County Commissioner Precinct Two. Commissioner Dobianski, consider and recognize the following employees for their years of service. I hope they're here. Okay. Mr. Paul Brzezinski and Mr. Bill Wilson. Oh, good morning. Okay. All of these partitions, it's hard to get, even though they're transparent. I didn't see you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Both of them are receiving for 15 years of service.
Thank you.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill Wilson, 15 years also.
All right, Mr. Wilson.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Mr. Al Peeler. Update on ongoing projects. Grimes County Courthouse, Grimes County Jail, and Grimes County Justice Center. Mr. Peeler, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. We'll start with the courthouse. Courthouse goes through its final walkthrough next Tuesday. The only thing that we have is I just happened to be doing my final punch list after about the 40th punch list and went, why doesn't that window have any hardware on it? And why does it stand on wide open? I went over there and there's no hardware, no handles, no nothing. I went, missed that in my 40th punch list. So they'll be fixing that this week. We will be through. I'm satisfied the way it is came through. We will be done and all final bills will be tabulated. Hopefully, our grant comes through and we get that and that just goes right back to the general funder where the auditor so chooses places. I'd like to keep it, but she won't let me. So that's great. We'll go to the jail. Jail is a challenge. Jail is shaping up the way I want it to. It's coming along. It's going to be a slow process. Everybody knows that we passed jail commissions.
Standards.
Standards. We passed their test or inspection. It's not going as fast as I want it to go, but we have a handle on the control system. And the control system is telling when they leave doors open, when they don't leave doors open. Junior Covington, Ozell Covington, has been a great addition to my department. And I thank him every day. We're in the midst of starting the cells. We have a lift station meeting tomorrow. It's hard to control inmates when they throw towels and stuff like that down. So we think-
When you say down, you're talking about down the sewer system.
Down the sewer system. And that gets to the lift station and wraps around the pump. That burns up a $30,000 pump and we're going. So what we're going to end up doing, we have to replace, I thought we would have to replace the whole lift station because it was, but we don't. So that's a good deal. We are going to change the floats in there because we have some, I want to call them non-commercial floats. I don't want to call them house floats, but they're not up to par for what we deal with every day. And I also want to see about a string that we can lift up, clean it out, put it back below it so it don't get to our pumps. That's there. So there's a savings there that will be spent on door locks, probably. Speaking of door locks, we haven't had a problem since I wired it. I don't know what I did. That system is, I knew what I did, but I would have bet that rewiring around the circuit would have not worked as long as it did, but it's working. Gives us enough time to make sure the Justice Center has a place to tie into. So that could or could not be a saving. We're budgeting for some stuff. We're finding out some good stuff. We're finding out some bad stuff, too. So roof is taken care of. We haven't had any leaks. The only leaks we've had flooded the jail because of the Justice Center and their hallway. They don't have a roof on it, so it pours all that water down into the jail. That's been handled yesterday. That was handled yesterday. Control system roof, mold remediation. We're still on hold because of COVID. It seems like with the control system, we're getting no, and the new roof, we're not getting any new roof. Justice Center, well, that's my baby. Justice Center, I gave you the, everybody has a copy of the modification proposal, the PMP. PMP, you'll see one that says pending. It's the very last, it's 17. It's 5,960, hopefully. I don't have my glasses, so sorry.
It is.
Okay. I had to back up. That is going to be for, and that's going to be approved. That is for where we had to reroute because of the water lines that we uncovered. That was for the Anderson Water Company. We uncovered three of their lines. Is that correct, Commissioner, three?
Yeah, I believe that's right.
Three, three lines that we didn't know was there. So what we had to do was reroute and go to a bigger culvert, is what I think is the difference. Yeah. So that's why you're seeing that change order. At that, we had a meeting with everybody. Harry was there to make sure the civil part was correct. You didn't have any, you gave the okay that day, correct?
Yes.
And then Commissioner Cox was there, just so, and then we had a, what was it? No, the Balespont guy.
Oh, Capps.
Capps. Because we were afraid we were going to dump too much on him. And he was like, hmm, no, go ahead. That sounds good to me. So because we're going to fill up his pond pretty good, is what it'll boil down to. So that's what that change order will be. You'll see it coming through the line. It says pending, but I'll approve. There's no. And I went ahead and put in, just so that you guys have it, the two weeks previous what we did and the two weeks look ahead. Normally, I hadn't been giving it to you. And then I said to myself in the meeting the other day, I was like, well, they can have these reports. Why not give that to them? And I wouldn't have to talk about every little detail. It's all right there.
That's a great idea.
Sometimes I have those, Judge. The other thing I want to talk about today is, I'm just going to briefly touch it. So we are ahead, we're ahead of what they told me before. We're ahead of June.
Before you say anything else, you're not going to-
No, I'm not.
You're not going to crash the process by what you're getting ready to share right now?
I'm not going to share it.
Oh, you're not?
No. We're ahead of June. We had a meeting. You already know it, don't you?
Jerry does.
We had a meeting. Our previous expected substantial completion was a June report. They have backed it up a few months. A couple of months, I guess. That's prior to adding on what rain days. So until I get the full report, I'm not giving you an update. So just think June for now. Does that make any sense?
Are we backing up in the months? Like instead of June, instead of May?
They're talking about a sooner move in than a later move in.
Okay.
Yeah, sooner than later. But they haven't added 85 rain days in. So I know they've made some progress. I know they have. We just had two 18-wheelers move in with, two 18-wheelers this morning full of sheet rock, so.
The word I was looking for was jinx the process.
Yeah.
I didn't want you jinxing it by giving-
So, no, I wasn't going to share that date because I want to complete, I want to complete before I tell it. But June doesn't look like it's on the schedule. It's before June.
Now, the Internet world is curious and nobody paying attention each presentation.
I should keep them coming. So in turn, that speeds up some processes for me, okay? We have to do, we have to get a handle on a couple things. We have to get a handle on what we're doing with furniture. And I know this is the big burr under everybody's saddle right now. So I can sit down with these drawings, and I have. And everybody goes, well, Al, I can't, I can't see it. Well, for me, and Chad, and Terry, we look at these and we can see it. For me, it's hard for me to not to know, well, why can't you see it? Or why can't, because we've been trained like that, I guess. So what I'm going to do is we are going to, I've been to everybody that's going into that building. And I've gave them a date and a time, or let know what day and time they are scheduled. It's the elected official or department head plus one. And they will go straight to their office. Because Collier kind of was like, yeah, we can make it happen, but listen, we got insurance requirements. Okay, I get that. Well, you're an actual working thing. So everyone that's in this right now, all the way to the district judges, have a time slot, 14th, 15th, and Monday, the 18th. I'll be out there and you come into the time slot that you were designed to. If you miss it, I don't know. They will fill out a need-not-want list for the Commissioners' Court to do that. When that happens, I will bring Michael Lloyd in because he, there's some things that, he has went and out and got off of a bid, the Byboard, Texas Mass, I think it's called. And he'll present what he designed. And then we can sit there and go, well, from our list, we don't need that, 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 and that. But you guys are too ass. Okay? That's where I'm planning on on that so to keep you guys informed. We have talked about moving. I have a prelim moving schedule. We're not going to mass exit any office. You will have a schedule. It will have, I'm going out for bids. It's hard to write up a bid when you have to show them. So it's just going to be moving accounting offices. So that will be happening in the near future. That has to go. We are going to do a couple workshops on that or a workshop of how the offices will have to help to cheapen the cost.
Well, since we're on the topic, Commissioners, I already have it on the January 20th agenda for us to have a discussion on what we're going to, how we're going to approach this with our different elected officials. Each one's their own boss, but, you know, how supportive are they going to be, our department heads, in boxing up their books and files and things like that? And then the moving company can just move. But that's a discussion for the 20th. So I want to give you a heads up that it's in conjunction with what Al's talking about right now.
Because I-
And it'll also affect the amount of what the moving company would be charging us. So the more we do, the less we have to pay them.
Absolutely. And the reason, everybody's, oh, we can use the diversion crew and probationers and, listen, we can't do that. Because we can use them to mow grass and paint. But when they go to pick up somebody's desk and knock off the trim in a brand-new building, they don't care. They're going back to their cell. So then we got to figure out how we're going to fix our new trim that just ripped out. So we really, that's not a viable option. We need somebody that's licensed, insured, and bonded to do it. Because we'll be doing a lot of moving. So we're on that project right now. Civil, man, it's got to quit raining before we can get going back again. That's where we're at on the outside. The inside's really progressing good. And brick, same thing. We got our, we got our brick. Brick is on premise now. Any questions?
Good update.
I'll answer.
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Peeler.
Have a great day.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Eight. County Treasurer Jim Bob Trant. Most of you know Jim Bob is off with illness. Talked with him today. He's doing pretty good. But I will cover for him on this item. And it's Consider and Take Action to formally approve the IRS 2021 mileage rate. See our attachment number eight. Attachment eight is kind of lengthy, but I guess the question that most people want to know, what's the mileage going to be for 2021? And that's 56 cents per mile, the reimbursable amount. And the other details of the IRS direction are included on our attachment number eight.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make the motion to approve the IRS 2021 mileage rates of 56 cents per mile.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? In hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nine. Grimes County Tax Assessor Collector, Mary Ann Waters, receive and accept the continuing education certificate reflecting successful completion by the Tax Assessor Collector of 20 hours of continuing education pursuant to. Senate Bill 546 in Section 6.231D of the Property Tax Code. See attachment number nine. Mary Ann, that was so exciting. I read through that attachment about four times. Good morning.
Good morning. It's just, once a year, I have to report my hours and that's all I'm doing at this time. I'm required to have 20. I think you have 30 and a half on there. 10 hours can be carried over to the next year if they're needed.
Excellent.
As most of yours have been virtual. Thank you for meeting that requirement and thank you for advising the court. Well done. We'll now go to Agenda Item Number 10. Roden Bridge Engineer, Harry Walker, considering take action to approve a proposed partial replat of Main Street Acres, Lot 44, in the Henry Hay survey 8-207, located in Precinct One. See attachment number 10. Remind the court, we had a public hearing on that this morning at 8:45. We did not receive any comments. So, Mr. Walker, I turn it over to you.
Again, we've had the public hearing. Nothing has changed in the last couple hours. The proposed replat meets our criteria. Will create two smaller lots out of the existing 0.873 acre lot. Two lots will be 3767 and 0.4963 acres. Because they have both public water, public sewer available, these lot sizes agree on criteria. We will recommend approval of the replat.
I'm going to approve the partial replat of Main Street Acres, Lot 44. I present it.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 10 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Agenda Item 11. Consideration of possible action to authorize Roden Bridge to sell the old county maintenance barn property at Piedmont and Dallas in Navasota. See attachment number 11. Again, Mr. Walker.
Judge, we're sure the county has a number of small parcels of property that were used as maintenance barns back in the day when we had actual road commissioners and each commissioner had their own barn. This one in Navasota has not been used in something like 20 years. It's about, well, it's on the corner of Piedmont and Dallas in Navasota. Actually, two parcels because it's split by an alleyway through there, which I believe will have to remain in place. We're not using it. I would just assume go ahead and dispose of it and put it back on the tax rolls in some form or fashion. Right now, it's just a liability and a maintenance responsibility for us.
Judge, it freshens the court's memory that the last time this was on the agenda, they threw it my way and asked me to do an investigation on it. And the investigation came up with, you know, everybody's memory's a little bit fuzzy about the history of what this is. But I'd ask the court to table this right now and come back to it at a later date, if that would be possible.
All things are possible, Commissioner.
That's what I'd ask.
How long do you want it to be tabled?
I don't know. I'm working with John Seale on a couple of things, so.
Have you got the attorney involved?
I don't know. It's important to do that sometimes.
Speaking of 2022.
That's what flashed through my head there just a moment. Could, could we maybe put it into February? February? Does that sound reasonable to you, sir? Let's put it in the-
I don't, I mean, I don't-
The second agenda for February, see where we're at?
That'd be fine, sure.
Would you make a note of that, Ms. Ree? Okay. We'll table till then. Just wanna ask a question, though. Even though we've tabled that Agenda Item, John, if and when we decide to sell that, is there a proper way that we should probably solicit realtors to? You know, I think it ought to be a, a county realtor for the month. I, I would suggest a county realtor so they can receive the benefit of sale of that property. But should we have some kind of a realtor pool or a rotation? Or should we send out letters to county realtors to see if they would consider being a part of that pool? What's your recommendation?
Judge, we can certainly talk about when, if we get there. But the, uh, look, Government Code talks about disposition of real property and, uh, primarily the two ways to dispose. One is to appoint a commissioner to conduct a public auction.
Okay.
And the other is to take bids.
Okay.
I don't recall what we did last. I, I think maybe bids-
We did bids on that.
Previous, right. And on this specific track, um, as I recall, and, and my memory is fuzzy about yesterday, I think Commissioner Finkie was appointed to pursue this and auction the property off and ran into some hiccup or, uh, with some change of the plan after she was given that authority from the court, and it didn't happen. There was in discussion about, uh, whether the workforce commissioner, someone's, an entity related, could use the property. And we don't have a, uh, ability to, uh, give the property away. There's no statutory authority for us to do that. But the city has a mechanism by which they could've done it. So there was a discussion about whether to convey it to the city, allow the city then to use it for workforce commission-related efforts. That was a lot of discussion and, you know, never long ago that was, but nothing ever came up.
Well, Commissioner Finkie was on there. We had Commissioner Housewell, so I would encourage you, Commissioner Cox, to help us come to a decision, yes or no, and if yes, let's get rid of it. All right. With that, then we will, uh, go to Agenda Item Number Twelve. Agenda Item Twelve, consideration of possible approval of the plat of Apostolo Number Two subdivision located in the Alfred Dever, Deveraux Survey A dash one eighty-two on County Road Three Five One, located in Precinct Two. See Attachment Number Twelve. Mr. Dobianski, I'll let you take the lead. Okay, I know that we've had some issues with, uh-
Mr. This, this property has been something of a problem. The owner of subdivision has been sold off lots without having planted them. Came to our attention and we were able to, to get them after a letter from the Attorney's Office. We were able to get them, go ahead and bring in this plat. So the configuration of the tracks you see on here represents lots that have already been sold. You'll notice on the plat, there are multiple signatures for the owners. Because the, the several of the tracks had been sold, required us to be able to stop this. I'm very pleased that they did, uh, see the light and come around and bring the plat in. There are some things I would've liked to have seen differently, particularly the very narrow flag of the lot. E is a, it's a thirty-six-foot strip rather than the sixty feet that we typically require. With that exception, everything else meets our criteria. We discourage flag lots, but again, because the property has already been carved up and sold off, I would not object to the configuration that they have. And we recommend that we go ahead and approve the plat. It's not a real, just a plat.
And I don't have a problem with that. But I, I do know that we had some sewage problems with, with some horses.
We did.
Yeah.
This has been under discussion for a number of months. And I'm pleased that we're able to finally bring them around and apply with our needs.
Therefore, I move that, if there are no further questions, I move that we approve the Apostolo Number Two subdivision. Agenda Item Number Twelve, there's a motion before the court, excuse me. Yes. Agenda Item Number Twelve, there's a motion before the court by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? I do have a, just a comment. Mr. Walker, the thirty-six-foot easement, that's not gonna cause us an issue where we require the sixteen?
No, because this is essentially their driveway.
Yes. Yeah, it's private, private.
It's not a public road.
Okay.
It's not even a private road.
That answers my question. Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Uh, thirteen, presentation of Roden Bridge Report, discuss and take act. Okay. We already have that, or do we? Yes. Any comments or questions on that, Commissioners? Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Discuss and take action to approve a temporary stipend for Roden Bridge Foreman during a trial for departmental reorganization. It's expected the court will conduct a closed session as authorized by Texas Government Code five five one point oh seven four personnel matters. I'd ask that we turn the internet off and, uh, Andrew, we're okay? Okay. We're out of, uh, executive session. We adjourned at ten fifteen. We're back into open session at ten sixteen. On Agenda Item Number Thirteen, discuss and take action to approve temporary stipend for Roden Bridge Foreman during a trial departmental reorganization.
I move that we approve the temporary stipend for Roden Bridge Foreman during the trial departmental reorganization and that the money will come from the operating budget.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Thirteen by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion?
How much is that?
How much is it?
I think the number was thirteen thousand five hundred for nine months. Is that correct, Jesse?
Yes, for nine months, but I think we decided to do it for five months.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Seventy-five hundred.
The five months number is what?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
Okay.
And that motion is gonna be made to take that money Friday.
He, he said operating budget. And that would be Roden Bridge operating budget. Further discussion?
That's not something that we normally do, is it? Ms. Archer?
No.
Is there further discussion?
Are we gonna allow other departments in the county to do this, um, whenever they want to?
Well, Commissioner, they have the right to bring it to the attention of the court whenever they need to. And then according to our policy, we have the right to address it. And if we agree with it, then we can make a move, as we're doing today. Or they can submit it, as the policy says, in February and May during our budget discussions.
So we have a policy on that, right?
What's your question, Commissioner?
We have a, you referenced the policy. There's a policy on that, right?
Yes, I'd be glad to read it to you. Changes to salary, excuse me, it's under, it's on page seventy-three of our policy manual. Changes salary structure and grade definitions. County positions are designated in individual grade levels and compensated based on similar duties. Levels of skill and responsibilities outlined by job descriptions described in the Grimes County Salary Structure and Grade Different Definitions. Elected officials and department heads are responsible for ensuring that the job descriptions assigned to the positions currently reflect the duties and responsibilities being performed in each position. Any elected official or department head subordinate to the Commissioners' Court may request a change to job description, grade level, or salary. The elected official or department head's request will be submitted to the Human Resources Department and placed on a Commissioners' Court agenda for consideration in February or May. And finally, at any time, the Commissioners' Court may review or adjust any job description, grade, or salary scale according to the needs of Grimes County. So yes, we have designated time periods, but the policy also allows the court to address that when we have a need. Are there any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
So the vote is three to two. If you need to indicate on the record, County Clerk, which Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Dobianski, County Judge Joe Fouth are aye. The nays are Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Cox. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Consider and take action regarding the burn ban unauthorized County Judge's signatory. I haven't had any recommendations, supposed to rain today.
It's still wet.
No action?
No action.
And with that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Is there a motion to, uh, I'm sorry, fifteen. Receive any updates on the strategic plan? Hearing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, is there a motion to adjourn? I move we adjourn. Second. And before we adjourn, just a reminder, Commissioners, we have a special meeting that will convene as soon as we adjourn this. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Why don't we take-